All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees meeting. I will call into open session beginning at 7:08 PM on December 7th. Thank you everybody for coming out this evening. We'll start our meeting as is usual with our opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Justin Chopp in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if I could ask you to please silence cellphones and any electronic devices you have to avoid any disruptions to those around you. And also take a brief moment of silence. Join me in that please. Okay, so moving on to the first item on our agenda is, excuse me, the program and presentation. The first I have is the performance by our district-wide choir director staff ensemble, something we don't see every day. Thank you.
The AISD has a rich and extremely successful choral tradition. Our groups have represented the district from San Antonio as invited on our choirs at the Texas Music Educators Association to New York's Carnegie Hall. This evening we have a special treat. Our AISD choral faculty are performing Silent Night.
Nice.
(Singing) Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright, round yon virgin mother and child, holy infant so tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night, shepherds wake up at night, glory streams from heaven above, heavenly host sing hallelujah, Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night, soul of God lost your light, radiant beams from thy holy face, with the dawn a redeeming grace, Jesus Lord as thy birth, Jesus Lord as thy birth.
Wow. Thank you. It is no wonder we have such amazing things happening regarding fine arts in our district. Wow, that was phenomenal. Thank you, thank you. I have chills, I have goosebumps. That's wonderful. Chili goosebumps, yes. All right. So moving on, our next agenda item is the Student of the Month. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rice. And it's time we bring our Student of the Month and ask our principal to come up. Principal Hagman.
Good evening, Dr. Rice.
Hello.
Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. We had the good fortune of selecting the Student of the Month for December, and our selection is Michael Nguyen. Michael is a senior at Lamar. He has maximized his high school experience. He is heavily involved in choir, performing in our top show choir, the Madrigals. He also performs in our a cappella choir. He is our student council's social chair. He plays on the varsity basketball team. But Mike is arguably best known as Thor. Case in point, there we go. He's the leader of our spirit organization, the Thor Corps. Michael also serves as a youth leader at the Vietnamese Martyrs Catholic Church. And beyond his impressive extra and co-curricular involvement, he has consistently challenged himself with advanced coursework, never earning less than a 95 for any semester grade in all four years of high school. We are very proud of Michael. He leads by example with enthusiasm, diligence, and compassion, and we are very grateful for having four years with this young man.
Michael, don't go far. You can, please, please, this is your moment. You've got the mic. Yes, yeah, I don't know if there's enough of us here that could actually break down it with the cheer, so don't go there just yet. But is there anybody you'd like to introduce, any future plans you'd like to share with us, or any other words?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank my parents for supporting me all four years and supporting me through all my decisions in high school. And through all those rough times I had, they're always there to pick me up. And they always pushed me to do more than what I thought I could do myself. And I also have to thank my principal for providing me with all the opportunities I had at school. And most importantly, I'd just like to thank God, you know, for all the things he blessed me with, because there's, you know, I'm very fortunate and very blessed to do the things I can right now.
Wonderful.
Oh, future.
Wonderful.
And for my future plans, I plan to attend UTA, you know, stay home with my parents, help them out, save money, you know, that's a good idea too.
Remember, he said he was going to help you out.
Yeah. Plan to be a PA, a physician's assistant, to make some good money and send it back home that way.
Very good, very good. Well, you have an impressive resume and a ringing endorsement from a wonderful principal. So thank you for being here and being one of just seven in the entire school district that are recognized in this fashion. That's out of 63,000, 64,000 students. So it's pretty special to be here. So congratulations on that, congratulations mom and dad. Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down and give you a small token. As you see, we all as trustees wear these pins. These are our pins that are not given out lightly. And we would like to present this cord to you, and you can use that every day, wear it all the time, probably. But in all seriousness, it's just a small token from us to know that you were here tonight, and it's special to us, and we hope that you hold that special dear to you as well.
Congratulations on being selected. Appreciate everything you do to your teachers. Thank you.
semifinalists and National Hispanic Scholars. Ms. Johnson.
President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, I would like to take a moment before we introduce this year's National Merit semifinalists and National Hispanic Scholars to say a few words about these outstanding programs. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships available to those students who take the PSAT and meet published requirements. Of the 1.5 million entrants, approximately 16,000 students are identified as semifinalists, and this year the AISD is home to eight of these outstanding students. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies outstanding Hispanic high school students and shares information about these academically well-prepared students with subscribing colleges and universities. Each year nearly 5,000 outstanding Hispanic scholars are honored, and this year AISD is home to 16 of these honorees. One more very important note that I'd like to point out, we have students representing Arlington Collegiate High School for the first time ever, since this is the first senior class at ACHS. This evening, these students will be our first inductees of the year into the 2017-2018 Wall of Fame. At this time, I would like to invite our high school principals to come up one by one to introduce their students. We will start with Mr. Shavir Dalla from Arlington High School.
President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, it's my pleasure to get to introduce Arlington High's National Hispanic Scholars as well as our National Merit semifinalists. Before I do that though, I have to give a round of applause to my awesome counselors. We have nine amazing counselors at Arlington High. Leila Perez and Brian Richardson are actually here with us tonight, so if we give them a round of applause. Students, as I call your name, if you'll come up with your parents, just have a stand up here with them, okay? First, we have Celeste Delgado. She is a National Hispanic Scholar, and her career goals are something to do with STEM. And I really liked her answer, because she said something that's going to make me happy to go to work every day. I thought that was a great, great answer. So if we give a round of applause for Celeste. Next up, we have Isaac James, and he is a National Merit semifinalist, and he plans on attending law school and becoming a public defender or prosecutor. Isaac, if you'll come up with your parents. And we had one more National Hispanic Scholar. I don't believe she was able to get here tonight. Her name is Gabrielle Kano, and she is undecided, but she wants to do something with medicine. So I don't know if she snuck in while we were earlier, but I don't think so. So these are Arlington High's National Merits and National Hispanic Scholars. Celeste, if you'll start us off, just introduce your parents, and then share with the board where you're going to be attending college, if you've decided.
Hi, first and foremost, I want to thank the board for choosing to honor this achievement, and also to our principal, Mr. Dalla, is one of the most wonderful principals that we have for AISD. And also my counselor, I want to thank him for supporting me. And then, of course, my parents, Maria and JD, for also supporting me throughout my high school career. I plan to go to UTA and study computer science and computer engineering.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to be here tonight. I'd also like to thank Mr. Dalla and my amazing counselor, Ms. Perez, for guiding me through this National Merit process. I'd also like to introduce my parents, Lisa James and Rich James. They've been my support system and my rock for my entire high school career, so I'm very grateful for them. And in my future career plans, I plan to go to either UT or Georgetown and major in political science or government and go to law school.
Now we will have Arlington Collegiate High School and Dr. Ben Bolin.
Good evening, President Rice, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to recognize some of the outstanding students from Arlington Collegiate High School. And before I do that, I'd like to recognize our outstanding counselors, Ms. Joanne Franks and Kelly Holic. And in attendance here is Ms. Holic. Appreciate the hard work that they do with our students every day. Ms. Franks is actually at another parent meeting that we have scheduled at the same time. So we are pleased to announce three of our students here from Arlington Collegiate High School. And students, when I call your name, if you could come forward and have your parents join you up front. First, I'd like to introduce Esteban Hurtado. Esteban was named a National Hispanic Scholar, and in the future, he wants to become a doctor focusing on family medicine. All right, next, I would like to introduce Hugo Martinez. Hugo was also named a National Hispanic Scholar, and in the future, he wants to be an entrepreneur and own his own business. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce our third Hispanic Scholar, Elias Perez. Elias, in the future, wants to work for the government and focus on politics. All right, so congratulations to the three of you, and starting with Esteban, if you could introduce your parents, and then talk a little bit about where you want to go to school and what you want to study.
All right. Well, hello. First, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for allowing me to be here tonight. Thank you. And I would also like to thank my principal, Dr. Bolin, my favorite English teacher, Mrs. Fuller, and my amazing counselor, Mrs. Holic, for allowing me, for helping me throughout these four years of my high school. And of course, my dad, who is here tonight. And I would like to major in biology at Texas Christian University and then go to medical school. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Hugo Martinez. First of all, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for allowing me to be here. And I would like to thank Dr. Bolin, our principal from ACHS. I would like to also thank our wonderful English teacher, Ms. Fuller. And overall, I would also like to thank the counselor, Ms. Holic, and everybody else in the staff, in the ACHS staff, for allowing me to be here. When I plan, my plan is to go to Stanford and go to business school and graduate and employ these techniques for entrepreneurship.
Before discussing my aspirations for the years to come, I'd like to show my gratitude for, first of all, the Board of Trustees for having all the students here tonight. But I'd like to also, you know, briefly show my gratitude towards my principal, my teachers, my counselors, and all the staff at our school that have helped, not only me, but my other classmates throughout the years. And I want to show gratitude not only to my dad, Fernando Perez, but also my mom, Mariana Perez-Guilar. And after graduation, I intend on attending the University of Texas at Austin and majoring in political science.
Before we continue, because of the Arlington Collegiate High School folks here, is Jennifer Fuller here? I know you are. If you, we're going to embarrass you for just a second, moment of personal privilege. Come on down, just so everybody can see you. So, there she is, Spencer's following you, so you're on the world wide web. For those that don't know, Ms. Fuller is essentially an Academy Award winner for our teaching profession, a Milken Award winner, where she was surprised in the recent past at her school. And just wanted to take the opportunity, knowing that you were here tonight, just to, from the board, congratulations, thank you for all you do, and obviously with these wonderful kids that are here this evening, it's an additional testimony of your great, great work with your colleagues. Thank you very much.
Up next, we have Lamar High School, Mr. Andy Hagman.
So good to be back. Dr. Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, we have four students to recognize tonight, two National Hispanic Scholars and two National Merit semifinalists. First person is, unfortunately, she's not here this evening, but it's Margaret Aguan. She is one of our National Hispanic Scholars, and she was one, is planning on studying actuarial science. So that is her plan. We do have Lucas Atidy here tonight. Lucas, you want to come on up? Bring mom and dad with you? Lucas is our National Hispanic Scholar, and he plans on, his interest in area of study is computer science. Wei Shen Huang is one of our National Merit semifinalists. He wants to either become a surgeon or do pharmaceutical research. Karen Yang, another National Merit semifinalist. Come on up, Karen. Karen's looking to go to medical school and become either a psychiatrist or a pediatrician.
Hi, I'm Lucas, I go to Lamar. I'd like to thank the board and also our excellent principal, Mr. Hagman. I'd also like to thank my mom and dad, mom and dad. I'm planning on studying computer science at Carnegie Mellon.
Hi, I'm Wei Shen Huang, and first of all, I love, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for having us here, and I also thank Mr. Hagman, our principal. And this is my dad, Kevin, and this is my mom, May. And next year, I'd like to hopefully go to MIT and major in biology, and hopefully after that, go to medical school.
Hi, my name is Karen. I would like to thank the board for having all of us here, and I would like to thank Mr. Hagman for supporting all of us throughout the years. And my counselor, Mrs. Boyd, she's been wonderful, especially throughout this college application process. I would also like to thank all of my teachers who have helped me along the way. And last but not least, my parents. This is my mom, my dad unfortunately couldn't be here, but I would not be where I am today without them. In the future, I'm not sure where I want to go to college yet, but I plan on studying biology and going to medical school to become either a pediatrician or a psychiatrist.
Next, we have Martin High School with Principal Marlene Roddy.
Good evening, Dr. Rice, Dr. Cavassos, Board of Trustees. We have several students that I would like to recognize tonight that are either National Hispanic Scholars or National Merit semifinalists. Not all of them were able to attend, but I am going to share a little bit about each one of them, and then those students who are here, they'll bring up their parents when I call your name out. We'll start with Nicholas Alvarez. Nicholas was a National Hispanic Scholar, and Nicholas says that after he earns his PhD in mathematics, he would like to work for a period of time as a mathematician at the National Security Agency. He says this agency is one of the largest employers of theoretical mathematicians in the United States. It would be thrilling to be part of a professional community in which pure mathematicians make such impactful contributions, and it's also a way of serving his country as well. Next, we have Calvin Virchill-Roman. And Calvin has the unusual honor of receiving both a National Hispanic Scholar as well as being a National Merit semifinalist. And his goal, as for his career, is to become, design and write computer software. He hopes to work his way up as an independent developer or project lead. Next, Kayla Banagdar. She's a National Hispanic Scholar. I'm not sure if she came in or not. And she would like to become an attorney. Nicholas Chen is a National Merit semifinalist, and he says he's currently working or interning with Lockheed Martin, and he would like to continue with that relationship and eventually work as an engineer, possibly back with Lockheed Martin. Claire Garza is a National Hispanic Scholar. Her intent is to become a PhD in neuroscience, and she hopes to focus on cognitive neuroscience and carry on research in that area. Next, we have Chris Malone. He's a National Hispanic Scholar. His goal is to work in some area of finance, entrepreneurship, and management. Next, we have Brock Moore. Brock is a National Merit semifinalist. His goals, he hopes to eventually work in a tech company and work on furthering technological innovation and the capabilities of computer programs. Next, we have Elizabeth Prickett, and I'm not sure if she managed to get here. She is a National Hispanic Scholar. Her career goals, she would like to become a nurse practitioner. Next, we have Abram Qui. He's a National Merit semifinalist. He would like to become an emergency physician. Next, we have Madison Raina. She's a National Hispanic Scholar. She aspires to be a labor and delivery nurse. Next, we have Charles Salazar. He's a National Hispanic Scholar, and he would like to become a paramedic for a fire department or possibly a nurse. Next is Brandon Sweeney. He's unable to attend this evening. He is a National Merit semifinalist. His goal is to become a physician, hopefully in surgery, he says. And last but not least, Sofia Viscuso is a National Hispanic Scholar, and her goal is to eventually work in the field of journalism or marketing.
Okay, I guess first and foremost, I'd like to thank the board on behalf of everyone here. I'm sure they're all very thankful for the board for allowing us to be here. I'd like to thank Ms. Roddy, my principal, my two parents, for just really being encouraging and just welcoming really what I and just welcoming really what I want to do, just welcoming that into our house, just making that a good thing. And I'd like to have a special thanks to my counselor, Ms. Lewis, who has done much more for me than I could ever want. It's been amazing what, how much, how supportive she's been, how she's helped. So, thank you.
I'm going to interrupt for a minute. I forgot to say that all of my counselors, except one who's sick with the flu, are in attendance tonight, and I'm going to tell you who they are real quickly before they thank them. That's Dr. David Pyatt, Jana Lewis, Suzanne Bandy, Connie David, Barbara Muller, Jerita Galbreth, our lead counselor Susan Kingen, Jay Davis, Edwina Thompson, Sarah Stringer, and our sick counselors, Amy Benson.
All right, so I'm Calvin, and I'm a little sick, so excuse me for that.
You've got a lot of flu going on.
Yeah. Well, it's not the flu, thank God.
Okay, good.
I'd also thank the board, not for the lack of flu, but also for having us here. And thank my parents for supporting me throughout my life with school and academics and my education. And my plan is hopefully to go to Tech or Harvard. There's a big gap, but I like both. And I'm a computer science and maybe classics, hopefully classics. Thanks.
Just thanks to the board and our wonderful principal, Ms. Roddy. A special thanks to my amazing counselor, Ms. Lewis, for helping get us here. I plan to go to Fordham University to major in neuroscience.
My name's Chris Malone. I'd like to start off by thanking the board, Ms. Roddy, Ms. David, and Ms. Muller in the back for just making school happen. I'd also like to thank all of my teachers. I see Mr. Quarter in the back. Ms. Epley and Ms. Alato were here earlier. My teachers have been incredible. I thank them so much, and I'm really lucky. So, my plan, I'd like to go to Baylor University and study business or finance.
Oh, and my parents.
A little prompty.
I'm Brock, and I'd like to thank the board and Ms. Roddy, and Ms. Muller and Ms. Galbreth. I've had both of them as counselors. And I'd like to thank my wonderful choir director, Mr. Quarter, for singing and staying. And my parents, Mom and Dad, for supporting me. I plan on attending UT Austin and studying computer science and finance.
Hi, my name is Maddie. I'd like to start with thanking the board and Ms. Roddy, and my counselor, Ms. Galbreth, and my former counselor, Ms. Kingen. I'd also like to thank my mom and my dad for supporting me in everything I do. I plan to go to A&amp;M to major in nursing.
I'm Charlie Salazar. I'd like to thank the board for having us all here today, and I'd like to thank my parents for supporting me the whole way here, Charlie Salazar and Maria Salazar. And a special thanks to my counselor, Ms. Kingen, for all the hard work she's done for me over the years. And I plan on majoring in engineering at either UT or Texas A&amp;M.
My name's Sophia Viscuso, and first, I would like to thank the board for having us here and Ms. Roddy as our principal. And then I would like to also thank my wonderful counselor, Ms. Lewis. And then finally, my parents, Mark and Angie Viscuso, because I definitely would not be here without them. I plan...
Yeah, that's true.
I plan on attending University of Texas at Austin or University of North Carolina and studying communications.
Thank you very much. If you'll return to your seats, we'll have a break in just a minute. We'll give another round of applause to all of our national merit semifinalists and
So, one thing that was a common theme was these students being incredibly thankful. Thankful for us as a board, thankful to their counselors, their principals, their parents. We're thankful for you, students. Thank you for being incredible shining stars in our district, for being role models in your own right, for representing Arlington as a community and our district as a whole very, very well. Thank you again. Round of applause to you guys. Lots of great things going on in Arlington ISD, and the, it's no small task to be in that national merit category. So, it's a special group. Thank you. We've all been there, seen things a lot over the years, and I'll say that our trend is that we are increasing our numbers every year. So, you're the largest group coming forward, so congratulations on that. And to all the supportive parents out there, as one said quite literally, they wouldn't be here without you. But more importantly, as meant figuratively, I'm not picking on you, your support is so vital. As you can see, it's demonstrated, just, I would have one ask, which is to spread what you do and spread your passion to others, because it is so needed in our community. Supportive parents lead to amazing children. So, thank you for your sacrifices. All right. So, moving on, the next section, let's see, we have one more presentation. This is by the Sister Cities of the Arlington, Texas organization. I believe we have Mr. Bruce Maxwell, and I see Julianne Warner there. If you want to, please come to the mic, and thank you for all you do with Sister Cities, and look forward to hearing what you have to say this evening.
Guten Abend, meine Damen und Herren, Herr Dr. Reich and Herr Dr. Cavassos. Now, I say it in English, good evening. Bruce Maxwell, President of the Sister Cities of Arlington. We would like to make a special presentation to you on a special book that was written by one of the members of Bad Kürnigshofen that was caretaker of one of the gifts that Arlington presented them back in 1951. Arlington helped this small town, Bad Kürnigshofen, which is our only sister city of about 7,000 people. Arlington had a pen pal here by the name of Theda Howell, so she also had a pen pal there in Bad Kürnigshofen. So, they exchanged letters. So, the young lady from Germany came over and visited Arlington. She brought her family and also her then-city manager, who wanted to meet the then-boy mayor, Tom Vandergriff, to tell them about the plight of their city. Bad Kürnigshofen sits on the old east-west German border, and they were being inundated by refugees. So, Arlington, between 1951 and 1954, sent over four trainloads full of goods to this small community, and to this day, they're still very appreciative. Anytime any guest will go over to visit from Arlington, they will raise the Arlington flag and treat you like a dignitary the entire trip that you're there. So, this relationship culminated in this book that one of the historians of the city came up with, with collaborations with a group from here. So, you can hear more about the Sister City relationship through our website and the city of Arlington and also our Facebook page. But we have nine books that we'd like to present to you and also to pass out into the schools, some of the schools, and we'd hope to see this in some of the curriculum so they can know the history of this relationship that's still so appreciative and going on today.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you. That is a great bit of history. I was not aware. I think our students would benefit greatly from that type of information. Thank you for sharing it.
And I'd also like to introduce Julie Warner. She's also our member of our group that's been over and taken several students while she was at Martin High School to our sister city to visit, so.
Yes.
Excellent.
Would you like to, you just drop them here?
You can leave them with Lisa, and she can pass them and make sure we get them this evening.
Thank you very much.
And I do have one question for you.
Yes.
So, part of the, with Sister Cities, one of the things that has grown out of that is what we had was our Kris-Kendall market.
Yes.
In Arlington. So, we don't have that as an independent market this year. Can you maybe explain to the group what that is this year?
Well, the Texas Kris-Kendall market grew out of visits to Germany, and this year, it's part of the new enchant Arlington. This group was in Vancouver last year, and they wanted to come to Arlington, and they knew that we had a Christmas market and wanted to be, us to be a part of the market. So, it's going on now through December 31st. So, we're, you don't have to buy tickets to get in now, but there's still plenty of food, gifts, and a good time.
Well, that's wonderful. Well, thank you for sharing that, and I just think it's a really neat connector point that maybe a lot of Arlington folks don't know, that the Kris-Kendall market, that's kind of neat. It's cultural, but not necessarily understanding that, well, it's because of this relationship.
With the Sister City.
So, thank you, and thank you for being part of the organization and continuing the cultural exchange and wonderful opportunities that we both realize as communities.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And can I say, I do presentations for seventh grade students, so any seventh grade Texas history teacher who wants me to come, I will deliver the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Warner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, our next item, and we, for anybody that's curious, we will have a brief recess just after this next item, is administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich, and I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for assistant principal for Williams Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. No lights indicating discussion, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Congratulations.
Thank you, President Reich, and I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal for Williams Elementary, William Meter, or Trey. Right? Come on up, William. Trey attended the University of Texas at Arlington, Bachelor of Arts in English, Stephen F. Austin for his Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently an English I, pre-AP I teacher at Sam Houston High School, has done co-teach, has also been an English II teacher, a pre-AP English II teacher, an English III teacher in De Soto. Trey, congratulations and welcome.
President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to stand in front of you as your newly, as the newly appointed assistant principal at Williams Elementary. I would like to thank my beautiful wife, who is also celebrating her birthday today, Jennifer.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. For supporting me through this entire process and being an incredible mother to our beautiful children, Jackson and Grace. I would also like to thank my mother, who hopefully is watching, a lifelong educator who taught me that authentic classroom instruction is not found in the assignments that are assigned, but in the profound experiences that are shared. I would also like to thank Mr. Fernando Benavides, Ms. Jackie McLendon, Dr. Angie Smith, Ms. Macy Holloway, Mr. Pete Cavassos, and the army of support I've had the opportunity to gain at Sam Houston High School. I am truly blessed to be in the company of such inspirational and transformational educational leaders and mentors, and I'm forever grateful for everything they've done for me. Three weeks ago, I walked through the doors of Williams Elementary and immediately fell in love with the energy and the culture of the campus. When I left, I knew I'd found a new home, one way or another. So, I would like to thank Mr. Kamla for agreeing that Williams Elementary is where I belong. And to my new family at Williams, I look forward to working side by side with you and building the same quality relationships that I enjoyed at Sam Houston. And together, through collaboration and trust, we will grow tomorrow's leaders.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and happy birthday to you. What a better way to spend it, right? So, as is our custom, we ask that you follow Mr. Cale. Rather than to the lobby, we're actually going to go to the hallway for a receiving line so that we can all congratulate you and welcome you. The reason that we're making that change is our students, we would love you to also follow Mr. Cale and allow everybody to be able to congratulate you and shake your hand as well. So, you don't have to, but if you want to, the opportunity's there for you. And we will take a brief recess. I do ask that you allow the board to jump ahead of everybody so that we can get back in and get to business. We'll be about 10 minutes, and then we'll come back in at about 8:05. All right, I will now call this meeting back to order. Next, let's see, we have no public hearing, and we'll move on to our open forum for agenda items. Let's see, we do have one card. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with the opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It's not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees won't reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. One card, when your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes, and five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there's one minute left on your presentation time. And when the red light comes on, the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. And the one card is Ms. Kim Martinez wishing to speak on the calendar.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. My name is Kim Martinez. I am the president of Arlington UEA, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you regarding the 1718 calendar. The calendar committee is currently working on next year's calendar, and from what I understand, the only options being explored at the moment are lengthening the instructional day by 12 minutes. UEA opposes adding any additional minutes to the instructional day. When the 15 minutes was added two years ago, teachers did not see any benefit of additional compensation or additional time for self-directed work in their classroom. Now, the district is looking at adding 12 more minutes. We understand the idea of wanting students to be out earlier, similar to Grand Prairie and Mansfield, and the devil is in the details of how the districts accomplish that. Those districts have significantly longer instructional days, and in addition to that, they begin school early in August, earlier than we do. And historically, Arlington has avoided starting the school year that early in August because of our entertainment districts, Six Flags and all of that thing. Adding 12 more minutes to the instructional day will not get students out before Memorial Day. It just won't. It can't happen. Lengthening of the school day and having students go less days might free up some time for the teachers, but so far, it's not been guaranteed that those will be self-directed workdays for teachers to do what they need to do to prepare for class. Teachers fear the additional time will be taken up by administrators, wanting more staff development and more PLCs. Leaving it to individual campus administrators to determine the time is, will not bode well for teachers in the end. We need the time to work independently in our classrooms. We understand there's PLCs and things to do, but ultimately, if it's left up to individual campuses, many will opt to have more trainings. There could also be some real consequences for our hourly employees, like bus drivers, custodians, paraprofessionals, and food service workers. custodians, paraprofessionals, and food service workers who with the reduced amount of school days will have less hours to work, therefore actually having a reduction in their pay. And that's not a good thing for them either. The other day in a meeting, I heard the words institutional creep. And that's an interesting term and one that is applying here. What guarantee do we have that the minutes just won't be added again in another year or two? Two years ago, it was just 15 minutes. Now it's just 12 more minutes. Where does it stop? We know developing a calendar is not an easy task, but UEA does encourage you not to extend the school, to the school day for the upcoming year, but explore other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are the, an action item to consider the project closeout for the MacBurne PDC renovations and improvement, phase one, bid package 10. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich, and we bring this item to close out our contract as part of our bond work that we've done at the PDC. And so this is an action item that we bring to the board tonight for your consideration.
Thank you. Do I have a motion or any trustees wish to discuss?
I move that we perceive with the closeout on the PDC.
Okay, we have a motion and by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson to approve this closeout. I don't see any lights indicating discussion and this is something that we will perhaps look at in the future regarding if we will be looking at these officially as items in the board or in our consent agenda, or if we can delegate, which we could do that to our superintendent, his designee, so just for future information. Okay, seeing no further lights for discussion, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, discussion action. The first one is the consideration of the schematic design of the athletics complex. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich, and this evening we'd like to bring for your consideration the schematic design for athletics complex. There's been much discussion and input and consideration for programming and our future needs with our athletics complex. And so before Cindy begins, I'd like to just thank everyone who's been involved, our coaches, athletics department, our staff that's been involved, our architects, et cetera, that have been involved in this process, our board committee. It's been a very comprehensive process and tonight we'd like to share with you the schematic design and for your consideration. So Ms. Powell.
President Reich, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. As Dr. Kavasos said, we've had a tremendous amount of input on this particular project. The athletics complex is a project included in our 2014 bond program. And you may recall that we came to the board in early September, September 7th, and presented to you all the program, our intended program for the athletics complex. And the program is a compilation of the spaces that we will include in a facility and adjacencies, square footage that we need for those particular spaces. Since that time, the board approved the program, since that time, we've continued conversations with coaches and athletics department administrators and our consultants, our architects and pool consultant on the project. And so it's, the design has been an evolution. And what you're going to see this evening is the schematic design for the facility that will show some enhancements to the gym and the pool area from even what we discussed in our program session with you all. So we have with us this evening architects from HKS, we have Mark Vanderfort, Wayne Rayno, Leo Gonzalez, and we also have with us our pool consultant Travis Stinsby with Councilman Hunzaker. And so Mark Vanderfort is going to make the initial presentation and then we will all be available to answer questions.
Good evening, Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Kavasos. It's good to be here again. Wanted to share with you some of the exciting opportunities that we think this facility represents for the district. We're going to maybe do a slight programmatic review to share in some of the ideas that Cindy just mentioned and then show you floor plans, site plans, and looking forward to the next steps. We're seeking your approval of schematic design this evening. These first two slides you'll recognize from our previous presentation, just sort of summarizing the goals district-wide from the design charrette that were gathered and they were prioritized at that time, excuse me, as well as facts about this type of facility. The UIL high school swimming events are 25 yards, for example. There is proposed, there's a minimum need for 22 practice lanes and a 50-meter long course that you've heard of certainly at the Olympics or in collegiate swim events is provided. There's 1,200 seats proposed, six seats proposed in the gymnasium, 900 in the auditorium. There's also a four-lane warm-up pool that can provide a lot of flexibility for the auditorium. There's accommodation for six mat wrestling meets, basketball and volleyball, and the athletic center fortunately can share utilities with the fine arts center. Playback, recording, scoreboards and video capabilities and the city of Arlington requires a storm shelter at this facility. Some of the revised programmatic elements related to the gymnasium. You may remember the last time we were here, we proposed a one-story facility with retractable seating. We are proposing here, after further review, the idea to have a raised seating arena, a small bowl. You'll see in a minute a rendering of that small bowl so that patrons are separated from performers or participants on the floor. There's also, we think that there's going to be sort of an exciting, attractive venue that's associated here. Site lines, there's going to be a sense of intimacy about this bowl that I just described and patrons will be close to the action. Wrestling, the six mats I mentioned, gymnastics, elementary training space will take place, you'll see in a minute, within this floor area and that, we have a layout that we can show you in a second. Basketball and volleyball will be performed on a permanent wood floor, which is set in the center of the arena. There's support spaces including locker rooms, a multipurpose room, restrooms, of course, concessions, storage and admin areas to help coordinate events. The master plan also allows for future additions and I think these are all elements that have come a long way since last September. You're going to see here three aerial view floor plans. This shows the basketball volleyball floor, which would be the wood floor in the center of the arena. And the diamond shape is actually a result of what we think is a very efficient layout of wrestling mats. You can see this with the two on the end. We're able to sort of bring seating closer to the action. And these wrestling mats would be stored in the red areas that you see underneath some of the seating. So that's kind of a very helpful approach to dealing with moving those mats when necessary. A layout for gymnastics, as you can see, would use the areas around the main wood floor. And so this shows a possible prototypical setup for those pieces of equipment. Switching to the auditorium, I mentioned we're proposing a 50-meter by 25-yard stretch pool with 23 practice lanes. There's a diving area at one end with one meter and three meter boards. That's the deep end of the pool. The deck widths have been optimized according to swim coaches and everyone in the district. And they're wider on the deck side that faces the locker rooms and so on where most of the activities will be, as well as at the diving end of the pool. 900 spectator seats, the four-lane warm-up pool, the similar type of support spaces, locker rooms, control room, concession, storage, weight room, training room and meet room. Those are all shared spaces that are proposed to be located between the gymnasium spaces and the auditorium so they can be readily accessed from either side. The master plan also calls for potential future additions that you'll see in a minute. Schedule flexibility will allow for program growth and elementary water safety training is provided. The warm-up pool definitely provides for a shallower pool and it can also be a warmer temperature or it can be the same temperature as the competition pool. So here you see several pool configurations just for the baseline pool, for the main 50-meter pool. This is showing, the arrows here are showing the practice lanes. The pool is 25 yards wide and so swimmers would practice across the width of the pool. And at the far left of the slide, you see in red, two bulkheads that can be configured in many different ways, but in this case, they're sort of stowed at one end. Similar, the same exact pool with the bulkhead spaced to create a swimming course centered in the pool, the optimum location for visibility from the seating. Still allows for warm-up lanes, at least six warm-up lanes and a clearance at the diving end of the pool. This is a configuration that allows for simultaneous meets, so there could be two meets happening at the same time. Oftentimes it's a boys' course and a girls' course. And so the warm-up pool would provide additional warm-up lanes for this type of event. And you can see that in this case, the courses are swimming parallel to the seating, which again provides the optimum viewing. This is a similar situation that provides or could provide a different way of swimming if you're swimming across the pool. You have an additional five warm-up lanes in addition to the warm-up pool. So depending on the nature of the event, the pool provides a lot of flexibility. So here you see the same pool at a slightly smaller scale. It's shown as the 50-meter course. So if there was a meet that required that 50-meter course, this is how it would be configured. And then the warm-up pool is shown to be actually in a separate space that's very close to the main pool space that provides a tremendous amount of flexibility, as I mentioned earlier, to be used by the community, to be used for competition. There's many different opportunities there. And I mentioned the flexible water temperature. So if you were having elementary school instruction, the temperature would be a little bit warmer than it would be for a competition swimming. If you were then going to have a big meet and then want those practice lanes to be the same temperature as the main pool, you could achieve that fairly quickly and easily. The warm-up pool is shallower. The main pool has a deep end and it has then a, what I'll call an intermediate depth for the remainder of the pool. So the proposed schematic design, you'll remember this slide showing the vicinity plan and where the site is located. And so the site plan here shows the configuration of the athletics complex and the latest configuration for the fine arts center. And you can begin to see how the drop-off areas work. Oops, if I can, let's see, got it. The sort of connector between Sanford Street and Division Street. There's also an additional connecting street here on the east side. There's an area of possible future development. So this developed area is about roughly 21 or so acres. The two buildings reside with the service sides facing to the west. And so there's also this wonderful space, the sort of plaza between the two buildings that's appropriately scaled and connects to this sort of arts lawn that we had described earlier. That's all still intact. All these trees here, we're proposing to save. Some of you may know that the current Eastern Star roadway is here and we're trying to save those trees and just move that connecting driveway slightly to the east. Both buildings have drop-off capability. Here at the athletic center, there could be a drop-off on the south side and you'll see the floor plan in a minute, but both the auditorium, which is at the northern end and the gymnasium or the arena have separate entrances. There's parking to serve both buildings and we've reviewed this site plan with the city and with NTCOG. It's a very favorable approach so far. The plaza area between the two, there's a geometry that's picked up off of the fine arts center and sort of strengthens the connection to the arts lawn, if you will, just geometrically. And then this is the warm-up pool sort of projecting here and you'll see in a minute that both the warm-up pool and the main pool are borrowing north light, which especially in the main pool area is behind the spectators, so there's no glare, there's no reflection, if you will, as you're looking out to the pool. Here's the first floor plan, the main pool here and the warm-up pool actually shown with that important link between the two that's very direct. Both pools have ready access to the locker room areas. The control room is situated closer to the diving end as requested. There's a corner lobby that gives access to the pool area, but certainly it also gives access through a grand staircase to the upper levels. And there are two other exit stairs required from those seats up above. These are adult changing rooms, if you will, on the first floor. And I mentioned too, the shared functions, not only is there a sort of outdoor storage area, but multipurpose room, weight room, training room that are accessible from both facilities. Then here down in the sort of sub-concourse level of the arena, you're at the arena floor level, there's four locker rooms, boys' and girls' home and away locker rooms. There's the ability, as I mentioned earlier, to store those wrestling mats underneath the seating. That's very efficient. There's additional storage areas. There's opportunities for officials. There's a small area for the athletic director's office to use as a staging area for any events, whether they be at the main pool or at the arena itself. And then there's a capability for future storage with the lobby again having its own expression, as I described before. At the second floor, you can see where that grand staircase arrives and we're referring to this corridor as kind of a promenade. You can sort of look out into the plaza. You can look out to the northeast, which is really a wonderful view considering the site location. And you certainly can look down into the pool. These are the 900 seats, the main pool area. This is a low roof area between the two masses and so they'll each have their own identity, each facility. And then the seating area, there's, from the lobby, there's two sort of grand staircases, home and visitors, if you will, that wind up. And when you arrive here at the second level, I think it'll be a wonderful sort of view of the arena. And then you're going to be able to see too, that along Division Street, we can have some glass and some protected glass looking out to Division Street and also looking from Division Street toward the building. I think it'll be an exciting view to see all the activities that might be going on. This is a first floor plan that shows the potential for future additions, both at this location as well as in the area behind the arena. And there's a service corridor that sort of slips in here and allows us access to mechanical conditions and so on. This is a rendering here of the main auditorium space and you can see again, that promenade area that I talked about would be behind this row of columns. North light would be streaming in and that's illuminating the swimmers and it's a real important aspect. And it's a real important aspect, so we have excellent control of the natural light in the nadatorium space. The arena, on the other hand, I think will be unique. I think it will be very well appreciated for its intimacy and its sense of, you know, celebration and that sort of thing. You see here sort of basketball configuration. There is the opportunity, it's sort of shown here, but you'll see in a minute, or actually showed it earlier, the opportunity to have an additional 300 seats on the floor. So the 1,200 with those for volleyball or basketball creates 1,500 seats for those Here you see an aerial perspective. It's a little bit light, but this is the Fine Arts Building here and this is the nadatorium and the gymnasium. Here you see the warm-up pool and this is the wonderful space, the plaza, that will take place between the two buildings. These are those trees that are existing that we're planning to save and reincorporate. This would be a main sort of drop-off drive with access to the two parking lots. And you can see that the nadatorium, maybe you noticed in the interior rendering, has a sloping ceiling. That helps to sort of not only reflect the light down, but also to minimize the amount of cubic volume within that space. That's very helpful. Here you see then the arts building in the foreground, the plaza space between them, and this would be the sloping roof of the nadatorium with that grand staircase that I described, I mean. With similar sort of canopy elements protecting the entries and the two buildings will dialogue with each other. They're familial, but they each have their own identity. So we think that that really magnifies the impact and the experience of the entire site. This is a view again with the arts building on the right. There's the warm-up pool projecting out. It again has wonderful exposure for natural light. And here you begin to see the entry to the arena gymnasium and a similar sort of raised roof area relates to the raised areas on the Fine Arts Center. This is a view most, sort of from the Division Street side. And so you see the similar sort of staircase here, there's a pair of them, one for home and one for visitors. This is the sort of second floor overlook that looks out to Division Street and then that canopied entrance at the gym entrance. And I think it's nice the way that the sloping roof not only works functionally for the nadatorium, but it sort of makes a nice gesture to the Fine Arts Center and to the rest of the site. To just look at our overall project schedule, you may remember that where the red bars indicate the schedule for the Fine Arts Center, which started a little bit sooner. The blue rectangles represent different phases for the athletics complex. And you can see how they're sort of gradually merging so that both projects can be put out to the marketplace June 1st, in which case we plan to bring those proposal or the contract proposal to you for consideration on August 2nd. I think you have a board meeting on August 2nd. That shows 22 months remaining for construction and opening June 1st of 2020. So this shows then more of a Zoom schedule and the yellow bars represent holidays. And we're so pleased to be able to bring this to you here on December 7th. If we have your approval tonight, we'll begin design development. We're also tracking in a similar fashion on the Fine Arts Building and we're planning to begin construction documents here at the end of this month. So you may have some questions and we've got a strong team here to help answer them. But yes.
Mark, just real quick, on the seating capacity for the nadatorium, if we just could clarify that.
Right. So we've had a lot of discussion around the appropriate number of seats for the nadatorium and we have decided that I think what was mentioned and shown here was 900 seats. We are planning to add some seating to that, so we would anticipate there being 1,000 seats in the nadatorium. And as Mark mentioned, maybe kind of bring closure to what it is we're asking the board to do tonight, and that is consider approving the schematic design. Once that's approved and the architects move to the design development phase of their work, and that's the more technical phase of the actual design process. And so before they know what they need to be doing in that technical phase, we need to understand that we have board approval for the schematic design itself. So that's what we're asking this evening is for the board to approve the SD.
Very good. So we do have opportunity for questions. Are there trustees that have questions? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Raj. Y'all have probably thought about this, but I just need to ask these anyway. Between the pool and the gymnasium, there's a shared space there and I think you said the weight room was in there?
The weight room, the multipurpose room.
And other stuff, right. Is there controlled, I'm concerned about the atmosphere in the pool. That chlorine fumes and stuff is pretty corrosive. Are those, is access to those shared areas carefully restricted?
They are, and they'll be on separate HVAC.
Okay.
Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems.
Great. And then my last question is, does enlarging the footprint change anything regarding our city codes, amount of parking, or anything like that?
The parking is based primarily on the seating count and we believe that we have a strategy to meet city parking requirements on the overall site.
I would count on you to do that, yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, President Raj. Can we look at the slide that shows the basketball arena again, please? So when you showed, I guess, more of a watercolor rendering of it, it does look very, very intimate. I guess my biggest question is just functionality. Where do the teams sit and is there room for, are there room for cheerleaders for both teams down there? You know, do we have room for everybody that needs to be on the floor?
Yes. You know, the basketball court itself stops here and this is a flush floor condition, so it's a change of materials, if you will. So teams and scorekeepers and so on will likely be located on this side. The home stands are over here. Cheerleaders can occupy, you know, these two corners. And what's showing here are three rows of floor seating on platforms. So they're not just on the floor, they're slightly elevated, but it's an opportunity to augment the seating count if desired in those venues.
Sure.
In those situations.
How high is that elevation between the basketball floor and where the seating starts?
So the lowest row of seating is right now planned to be eight feet above the floor.
Okay.
And I mentioned rolling those mats underneath. And so those mats are like four feet in diameter when they're rolled up. And so there's going to be kind of a protected opening that, let's say, a shutter that rolls up. The mats can stow away, the shutter comes down, and there's a lot of flexibility that way. So there's actually, right behind that wall, there's headroom, ceiling room for the locker spaces that are proposed.
Can you show the other slide of the basketball arena, please?
So from the floor of the lowest element to the floor of the arena floor is scheduled to be eight feet.
Okay.
There will be a little curb in front to, just as a safety element, and a low handrail in front of the seating.
Okay. So I guess just line of sight. Can you talk to me a little bit about that, please?
Yeah. So the line of sight and the slope of the seating is being scheduled to be able to capture all the action for the different venues. So you'll have, I wish we had a section to show you, but it's, you know, it's scheduled to where the slope and the line of sight is parallel to the slope of the seating. From this side, there obviously would be a certain area which is not visible, directly visible. But for most of the, for all of the competition areas that are out in the center of the floor or the wrestling configuration, volleyball, basketball, you have full view of those activities.
Okay. So if, for instance, you're sitting on this side and your child is wrestling immediately below because those wrestling mats, you know, took up quite a bit of room, if you're sitting sort of midway down, would you be able to see that wrestling mat in its entirety and not miss your baby?
Yes.
Okay.
So this space here gives you the room between the wall and the ring?
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yes. Okay. And then is there room line of sight wise? Are we, I was a cheerleader, so maybe this is a little.
Okay.
Personal, but are we hiding the cheerleaders up against the wall and they'll be cheering to a wall and no one can really participate with them and, or they're shouting across to their folks on the other side? Or do you feel like that line of sight is adequate, that everything that's going on down there on the floor will be visible to the people who are in the audience?
I think if the cheerleaders are here, you know, behind the teams on either side, that they're going to be very visible.
Okay. Can you show me the gymnastics slide again, please? So I'm sorry, we kind of went through this one really quickly. Can you just, with your little pointer, is the whole area open for the gymnastics equipment? Is it just those little kind of things that I see on the sides?
We're showing these things around the sides and the wood floor area could be used not only for staging, but also for a dance floor, 40-foot by 40-foot dance floor. And these are, you know, the smaller scaled events like balance beams you see here, some of the uneven bars. This is a trampoline with a net around it. This is a vaulting track. These are all sort of scaled for elementary students.
Okay. Okay. So, sorry, I've got notes all over this page if you'll bear with me for just a moment. Can you show me the slide where it's got the two pools shown, so the competition pool with the warm-up pool?
I'm going to go to the floor plan.
Okay.
There's the warm-up pool and the main pool.
So I believe there was a slide previously that showed the dimensions of those. And my biggest question is that when you showed having the warm-up lanes in the same pool, obviously there are certain dimensions, but then it seems like the warm-up pool is a different dimension. Is that an issue for competitive swimmers warming up? Or am I not reading the dimensions properly?
I don't believe it is and I'm going to ask Travis to come up and help respond to that. When you have 23 lanes, the warm-up pool will be approximately the same width in each lane. You understand?
So the main 50-meter pool is 25 yards wide.
Right.
And I was thinking, kind of similar thought, I think, that you're saying is this is actually 25 yards long as well.
It is, okay.
Any of the main, you know, competition that is UIL or high school meets are held in 25 yards. So these four warm-up, warm-down lanes are also 25 yards. So we'll have ability to not only swim competitively in the 50-meter pool, but have additional warm-up, warm-down in a standard-sized lane. It is common to have warm-up, warm-down in non-standard-sized lanes, but we'll have standard-sized lanes.
Can you show me, well, maybe you don't have to show me the slide, but my question is, do we have concessions in the nadatorium? Are there concessions upstairs and downstairs, exclusively upstairs? And was there talk of a kitchen and where is that located or did I imagine that?
The, there's concessions upstairs?
Upstairs, okay.
There has been discussion about a small kitchenette-type area. That's not currently shown.
Okay, so, okay. So in the nadatorium, I guess the competitors are all downstairs and all the spectators would therefore be upstairs, hence the concessions are located there, right? And then there were.
Yeah, and that's really what you, as I understand it, what you want to do is separate the patrons from the participants.
Okay, makes sense. And I think that this might be a little too granular, it might be in the next presentation. But at one of, at the pool that we went and visited, the bulkhead width was kind of a big deal. So they wanted to make sure that there was room for the person who's jumping off of it, I guess the swimmer, super technical term, and the person who's timing them. I guess just a note, just to make sure that our bulkheads are wide enough that it can accommodate everybody and maybe someone can still walk behind to get to their lane, et cetera.
Here's the man.
Our standard program right now includes a six-foot bulkhead, which we would say is the starting bulkhead, and then a four-foot bulkhead that's primarily used for turning more so in this configuration where we have the starting blocks in the center and then turning on the bulkhead. The six-foot is industry standard for that scenario, so it's a little bit wider than the four-foot, so you can have all your athletes and then your timers and officials as well. We don't necessarily want to go much larger than six feet because if we do, then we're going to take away additional practice lanes.
Okay.
So if it was larger than a lane, then we're going to subtract from our day-in and day-out use. And so six is kind of the preferred standard for that.
Okay. And can you talk to me a little bit about security in this building? Obviously, this is going to be a building that's functional during the daytime, have hopefully elementary school kids, PE classes coming in and doing a variety of things. So the same way that we need security at our elementary school, I would think that security would also be very important here. Can you talk to me a little bit about that, please?
Yes, there's, you may see here, there's a vestibule, a security vestibule at the nadatorium that's monitored by a receptionist and there's a small administrative suite here that really is at point, it's at the corner and able to monitor the lobby area, to monitor the elevator, the grand staircase, to look into the pool area itself. It's pretty well situated. And in similar fashion, there's a box office facility manager sort of situated here in the corner of the lobby. So I think that those issues have been addressed.
Okay, and those are the main entrances, but we also have entrances, like a loading dock for equipment and things like that?
And those would be access control.
Let's talk a little bit about just access for the disabled. I'm assuming that that's going to be worked into your program and we'll see that afterwards, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of the seating areas will be able to accommodate accessible.
Okay. And the pools would be able to be used by anyone?
Yes.
Both pools will have any accessibility to be able to be used by anybody.
Getting in and out of the pool, that kind of thing?
Correct, yeah.
I think that's, I think that's all of my questions. Family restrooms will be available? We'll put that in the plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think I asked you that last time, so you probably saw that coming. And then one last thing, and I don't know if this is you guys or more us as a district, but I had an opportunity to see a presentation on placemaking, which is less about sort of the architecture of things, but more how you put things in the space that invite people to engage in it in a variety of ways. but more how you, um, put things in the space that invite people to engage in it in a variety of ways. Uh, I have two young boys, so everywhere we go, it's like their own parkour course. The first question I get when we get out of the car is, can we run yet? And so, um, specifically helping divide, um, visually where cars are versus where pedestrians and people hang out, um, thinking about in that open space, what are some ways that we can encourage people to enjoy that space and not just pass through it? So, um, that's just a thought to consider, please.
There are plans for furniture, outdoor furniture to be provided. There's, um, bollards that will be lining along that driveway to sort of protect, uh, if you will, visually protect and, and physically protect and separate the pedestrian areas from the automobile areas. There is the capability to cordon off that driveway and connect directly to the arts lawn. So there really could be an opportunity for larger events to use those outdoor areas centered between the parking areas.
Very cool. Um, last thing, just a technical question. I'm not, where was the, um, there's like this huge equipment that has to help, um, filter the pool water and filter the air. Can you point out to me where that is in the nautatorium?
So there's, um, a pool equipment room here.
Okay.
And it's situated here between the two pools, which is ideal to minimize the number, the length of, of piping runs and so on. And then the HVAC equipment for the pool is actually mounted, supposedly mounted on the roof here, um, on the low roof centered between the two buildings and screened. You won't know that those units are there. And that's a central location, so when you're talking about distributing air and returning air, especially within the nautatorium, to not have any sort of dead pockets or it's, and short-circuiting of, of the airflow. We think that this is, you know, an excellent approach.
So there will be a shared HVAC system between, uh, arena and the nautatorium?
That's for the nautatorium, the, the main space in the nautatorium.
Okay.
There also will be some rooftop units located at various locations on the arena.
Okay.
And so, um, that's a separate system, but very direct and very straightforward.
Okay, cool. Um, Polly, uh, had also, uh, her concern was my concern as well, which is we have been to a place where they had, you know, this beautiful locker room immediately off the side of the, uh, of the pool for their athletes to use. And I think they've been open for maybe two or three years and there's already just corrosion starting to happen. So, um, if we could please try to minimize that so that we don't have to continually, uh, replace that equipment. Uh, I would appreciate your thoughtfulness on that.
Weight room, Ms. Hudson.
Did I, what did I say?
Locker room.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant weight room.
Definitely.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Um, I know you guys put in a lot of work getting us to this point, uh, and I genuinely appreciate it. You were well-prepared for, um, all of my questions, um, as you were last time as well. Um, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the time and effort and the amount of time that we've been able to spend in, um, reviewing this. Um, I know that Coach Chambers, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Mays and myself were able to go down and, um, see the regional playoff game, uh, in Glen Rose and saw their arena, which is very much aligned to what this looks like. And it, but, uh, they have a, a basketball competition floor, uh, with this arena seating and it's much tighter, uh, much, much tighter. And, um, uh, there was full access for being able to see players, see competition and, and for the cheerleaders. As a matter of fact, most of these complexes, the cheerleaders are at either end, uh, of the court as opposed to on the, on, uh, the sidelines. Uh, so the space, because we're allowing for six, um, mats for gymnastics is, uh, or, or for wrestling and the gymnastics area has made this a much wider. I think you even mentioned that we could put three hundred more seats down on the floor, which is a huge number of, of, um, of additional seating. So what the space around the competition for both, uh, basketball and for volleyball is, uh, is so much greater that it even allows, uh, more, um, spectator, um, review. I, I, I would say of, of a full peripheral vision of, uh, of the entirety of the court. So I, I, I appreciate, uh, that with this complex, it won't even be as tight or condensed as what we saw with the Glen, Glen Rose, um, facility, but I, which I think that you and I both marveled at and said, this is pretty amazing. And if we could get anything a, along these lines, so what I'm seeing here, I'm, I'm just, um, extremely pleased with. With the way that the schematic layout of the pool and the warm-up, I'm glad that we were able to, take the time, uh, as a board and really review. And we went back to the coaches over the course of the past, um, few weeks and, and we were able to sit down with the, uh, swim coaches and find out what other needs that they wanted. So it wasn't just that we, um, we had this one and, and the addition of, of the ability to have warm-up lanes. And we saw a lot of different, um, mock-ups of putting those between the bulkheads, being able to, you know, uh, maybe even expand, lengthen the pool, which were really not optimal. This is the most optimal, uh, schematic layout. I believe that also when we were talking about the competition, that many of the, uh, the coaches were talking about, uh, relays. And, um, Ms. Hudson asked about the bulkhead and, uh, would it allow for, uh, the, um, ability to have additional people on the, uh, the bulkhead? Well, uh, with us going to a consistent seven-foot, we were talking that, uh, the, at the ends, we now can have, uh, the competition moved in that direction for the relays so that there would not be, um, a overcrowding of the bulkheads. Now we can actually use the ends of the, uh, the, the pool itself, uh, to our advantage. And with the, um, dimension of the pool across, we, we could also break that up for both male and female competition for preliminaries and then open up, uh, for the bulkheads for, uh, the race. This makes this pool so practical. It makes it where we can, we can host, um, not only, um, uh, just small, events that, but we can really, uh, take it to the next level and offer, uh, true competition for both our male and female athletes at the very same time and be able to run it very efficiently. And, uh, being able to have the option, uh, now of, uh, this warm-up pool that could be used for, um, our early ed, uh, swimming, have it at a consistent, um, depth that's not as deep as what we fall, fall into. And I liked, um, Mr. Hogg's comparison, it wouldn't be, um, as, uh, overwhelming for students to walk in, uh, into that, that huge pool complex. I really believe that we're, we're hitting the mark in both, uh, sides of this facility. And as a result, I would like to, um, move that we approve the schematic design for the athletic complex.
Second.
Okay. So we have a, a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mrs. Hudson, uh, to approve. We do have additional lights, uh, for, uh, further discussion before we vote. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Um, I just have one comment. And that is the space in between the pool and the arena area, um, I think is amazing. As a parent who has been to many, many tournaments, always looking for a space in between games for the participants to be able to go to. And the fact they don't have to hang out in a parking lot and they can be in a safe place, eat, get a breath of fresh air, whatever, I think is really nice. Then I have one question. Uh, Chambers, Perry, Peach, are y'all feeling goosey's? That's all I need to know.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Uh, Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Um, let me just say, the change in the redesign of the basketball, volleyball is a great change. Um, I think we were all a little hesitant when we first had it in the floor level and I'm glad we came back and made that raised area. Uh, Ms. Hudson, I had some state questions to you about sightlines. Think of it as a, you know, fifteen hundred seats, twelve hundred really, that's a very intimate basketball arena. And there is a fair amount of space, but it's not so big that even if you're on the back row, it's still gonna be a very good viewing. I think, I think people think about like the eighteen thousand-seat A A center, something like that. This is a tiny, I know a couple of y'all went up to the Ford Center in Frisco and every seat in that location's a good seat. Um, we think about that and that's twelve thousand seats, so everything's pretty good from a sightline. I think raising that floor, the level to keep it barricaded off, sometimes parents can lose their mind in athletics. So having a barrier, a natural barrier, Ms. Mays, I wasn't referring to you. It was all about Mr. Hibbs over there. It is, it's just, it makes it nice and not even for our parents or sometimes officials, you know? It's a hard time finding officials this day and age and, and high school sports is having a hard time finding officials. So the more you can give that barrier. I agree, I think we have taken into great consideration, Ms. Mays, you're a hundred percent right, as we looked at those silly, having some of those shared functions, it is very noticeable. I think even if there's a door going into the pool, into that weight room, you're gonna have corrosion problems. So we've gotta figure out a way to not have something, 'cause those pool rooms, um, there's a lot of chlorine pumping through that building right there. One thing that just popped in my brain, and this is a crazy thought and idea, and this is not something I should be bringing up on schematic design night. But as I, and I've looked at this presentation, serving on both committees for the fine arts and this, a hundred times, but I just saw it as we looked at today. If you go to the watercolor of the outside of the pool.
Watercolor or just a rendering?
Water, yeah, the watercolor from the fine art side looking at. Right there, that's fine. When you're up at the second deck of a pool, you're kinda caught in the chlorine bath that you're sitting there as a guest. Seeing this out, and this may be totally off on spatial-wise, and I am not an architect, I'm a sales guy in the healthcare world. So, but I look at that pool, the therapy pool, could that be a walkable roof? 'Cause we did have discussions in ear, and I know that's a, and, and we had discussions earlier that that area between the two buildings is going to be a plaza area. It can be used for events, it could be used for different types of things. Just a crazy thought, just throwing it out there. If we don't throw crazy ideas out now, it, tonight's a speak now or forever hold your peace night, so I know what that is. When we originally talked, I, I do, I thought we'd originally talked on the gymnastics, I just wanna make sure we build in and going off a little bit of Ms. Hudson's, um, making sure we have it where that floor can be padded for tumbling, for things like that. I think that's an important thing. We talked about building in previously in a committee. And then, I can go back and forth, you know, I thought we'd originally talked about making that bulkhead, one of them eight feet, um, instead of the six-foot mark. I know four's definitely too small. I can be convinced the other way. Travis, if it's killing our space and size, I know that's, bulkheads take a big part in consideration of that. Just, just a thought on that, 'cause I definitely know when we looked at Louisville and I, I've talked with other, you know, I've talked with my colleagues in Northeast I S D who have now built, are building their third nautatorium from a district not much larger than us, they've got a little more experience on building those. I always think the bigger, the better, but I'm also a fifth-generation Texan, so I, I always think bigger's better in Texas. But otherwise, and then HVAC is number one critical factor in a nautatorium. I'm gonna have to take y'all's trust on putting it in the center is going to circulate, um, the most. But I know that is, HVAC is possibly the type of the pool is probably key one, and HVAC's possibly key number two for a pool.
And so I mentioned earlier, the return air is, will be drawn from all four corners.
Okay, all four corners, that's a critical, okay.
And back to that central location, so there's not any short-circuiting of fresh air.
Perfect. I must've missed all four corners, 'cause all four corners is a key, key factor, so that's all the questions I have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hogg. I, I do wanna follow up with you, just to clarify. So on the, uh, potential, uh, walkable rooftop area and, and the bulkhead just, uh, idea of six to, I thought Mr. Hibbs had seven feet, but I know it was six and then eight feet. So do, do you wanna have more of a conversation about that, if there's will here to discuss that? Is there any, any thoughts if we go to an eight-foot, um, what, how, how much of an extra burden in that extra two feet of pool length it would be?
I feel like it takes away deck space, I mean, I trust the experts and I feel like it takes away deck space. And I think the deck space may be important than the extra bulkhead space, personally.
So, okay.
There would be additional expense in terms of just added square footage and added pool area, although it's only two feet wide, it can add up quickly. I wanted to make sure though, um, Mr. Hibbs mentioned the capability to actually with, with the warm-up pool being nominally, you know, shallow, four feet deep, um, there's the capability for the main pool to have a greater depth all the way to the eastern end. And that means that you can have relay races, for example, from the end, diving in from the end wall. That means you have twelve feet of deck space. It's even more, in a way, it's even more than if you had a wider bulkhead.
And that makes sense going on there. And let, let me ask one other question and just follow that. The sightline in pools are very critical. Um, are we proposing glass on that front when you're sitting up in that front area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I can, with the deck, the way the pool's designed, I think a six-foot would be more than enough for us.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So one of the key, other key points, um, that we just wanted to discuss is that this is the replica of what they're actually, uh, participating at the state meet. Um, so we talked about this a couple of days ago, but the, the state meet is held at the University of Texas and they actually start off a six-foot bulkhead as well. So the, the bulkheads that we have designed at this are, are held at the highest levels. Also, the other component that, um, Mark talked about, our prime course with having additional warm-up, warm-down space is most likely going to be orientated towards one side. So we have more than eight feet. Um, we can have twelve feet for all of those activities to happen. So we'll have a constant-depth pool and additional, uh, ability to separate in between what's gonna happen on the left-hand side, which would be diving, and then, um, have warm-up, warm-down in the middle and then a prime course on the right-hand side, which would be a great facility.
Uh, before you go, I think Mr. Tupp has a related question.
Yeah, I, I learned a long time ago that sometimes I just need to smile and nod and, and just go with the flow. But, um, I have a really basic question to help me understand what, what's going on. And that is, um, can you give me like a one-minute primer on what a bulkhead is and why it's important?
So we have a, a fifty-meter facility. Um, obviously fifty meters is a lot of square footage of water and we have a lot of space to be able to use it. High school swimming, college swimming is actually held at a twenty-five yard, uh, distance, not the Olympic fifty-meter distance. So a bulkhead is a movable wall that allows us to shorten or rearrange the pool, so it becomes a more flexible space. So we're taking the fifty meters for Olympic level and we're able to change it to a high school pool or to have dual high school pools in that one body of water, or to have twenty-three practice lanes. So the bulkhead makes this space incredibly more flexible. Um, the difference is different widths. The wider the bulkhead that we, we have, the more volume, the more, uh, deck around it that we're lengthening the building. So we're trying to play a balancing act of having, um, appropriate widths to make that functional, but also not adding extra cost to the facility that don't actually add to the program. So the, the difference between the turning and the starting, so we have a six-foot bulkhead that will have starting blocks on it. So if we do have those multiple courses, we can have, uh, enough width for somebody to be able to start off a we can have enough width for somebody to be able to start off a starting block on that six-foot bulkhead, and then there would still be timers and officials that would be able to. The turning bulkhead is not wide enough for that, that it would just have foot traffic from officials. So the additional two feet makes it wide enough to have a starting block, and then the, all the traffic that has to happen behind the starting block.
So are these permanent fixtures in the pool, or that, can they come out? Can we have the entire length of the pool at some point, or?
So, when they're completely stored over to one end, we have a fifty-meter facility. So technically, the word stretch is used often in this type of scenario. So our, our pool isn't exactly fifty meters long, it's fifty meters long with the bulkheads in. So they're maneuvered from side to side. When they're all stored all the way over on one side, it's fifty meters in length to allow for that Olympic distance. When they're used in the middle of the pool, we divided it up into multiple different scenarios.
All right, thank you so much.
Before you go, just one more clarification for me. So in this example, well, I guess those are, this example's with warmup lanes. Okay, so in that example, will that wider, that six-foot bulkhead be used for the starting blocks, or will that be where we're utilizing the deck?
We'd be utilizing the deck now.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Okay. Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. And Mr. Hogg, any, any further thoughts on, on rooftop? I, I like the thought, I just wish I, wish we even looked at it a long time ago.
We've seen the picture and seen how that we, the ther, the warmup pool is kinda adding on in what we're doing, and as you look at that, at that plaza and staff and what they know it could be used for, and also, I hate the smell of chlorine, so there's an area to walk out right from the outside, it's maybe a, an interesting use of, of rooftop.
Yeah, I just, I think for you guys, there's gonna be a potentially extensive consideration as far as access and how that's built, and.
It would have to be.
They're all panicking.
Taking into account.
Why'd we let him ask a question?
I think it's great, though. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is make the best use of, of the district resources, the community resources, and we're always looking at potential event venue, absolutely.
We can certainly.
So, we'll just count on you to make it happen within the, the budget.
Okay.
Extra money.
All right.
Mr. Hibbs.
Yeah, President Rice, I just wanted to, I do wanna just clarify the, what you were asking about the seven foot, and, and they just mentioned it a few moments ago, but just wanna make sure that it was, it was very clear, that what we're talking about with, since we're moving towards a warmup pool, we can go with a consistent depth pool at seven foot. That's what, that's what I was talking about, is seven foot, is it's a constant depth, because what we were talking about before, without the warmup pool, we were going to have four foot. So, that would only allow the, the ends to, or the one end to be used for a turn rather than a dive-in. So now we'll be able to actually have seven foot, which is appropriate entry level for a start, a dive into the pool, correct Travis?
Correct, yep. So, generally speaking, what we would get into in terms of design development is looking further at the depths of the facility, but right now, we're assuming with this warmup, warm down space, that we're gonna have a seven foot depth, a majority of the, the pool. The diving area will have a thirteen foot depth to allow for that, and then there'll be a transition from thirteen to seven. But having this additional space frees up the program to be able to have diving at all the facility, which makes it a high-level competition venue.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other lights indicating further discussion. So, with that, please vote. We have a schematic design, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, so, moving on, this is also discussion action, and, and Mr. Cale, you'll have to make this as exciting as everything we just had. Consider the staffing ratios for the eighteen-nineteen budget, good luck.
That might be challenging. Good evening, President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. We're here this evening, do we have a PowerPoint? There it is. We're here this evening to propose our draft for staffing ratios and formulas for the eighteen-nineteen school year. I think you probably have a hard copy in front of you as well, since I know those numbers on the, on the PowerPoint are small. Effectively, the ratios proposed for eighteen-nineteen are unchanged from seventeen-eighteen. The, the PowerPoint is broken up into the same categories that we've used in the past, including our campus core, our administrators, and our auxiliary type positions. But again, you can see the seventeen-eighteen ratio events, showing the ratios themselves, and then in the eighteen-nineteen proposal on the right-hand side of the slide, showing no effective change.
Very good. Are there any trustees with questions, or this is a discussion action item, so I would entertain a motion as well. Mr. Hibbs.
President Rice, the Finance and Accountability Committee did review this, we reviewed it with the administration. As Mr. Cale said, there's effectively no change in staffing over what we've had in the previous sixteen, or seventeen-eighteen, and so this is just continuing, continuing at the current ratios and formulas. And it came out of committee with a recommendation to move forward, and, and so, is saying so. I would move that we approve the staffing ratios as presented by the administration for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget year.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Ms. Hudson, to go ahead and approve the staffing ratios. We'll have additional discussion now. Ms. Hudson?
I just had a really quick question, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but just wanna make sure for clarity's purposes. When we are looking at that campus core, and for instance, in pre-K to fourth, we're looking at a twenty-two to run ratio, fifth and sixth, the twenty-six to one ratio target, that is specifically teachers, not any other kind of staff, is that correct?
That is specifically teachers, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, that was my only question. Mr. Cale?
Thank you. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Mr. Cale, just one question. I think these ratios are where we need to be and where we've been in the past. After this, you will review individual classrooms, because as we've looked in years past, we've seen some that have very small numbers on specialized classes, and sometimes there's a reason, and sometimes it's there. The next steps for this, for your team will be, y'all will at some point review those numbers of maybe special exceptions for any high school classrooms, I think specifically high schools that have an extremely low number, and make sure those are approved. Is that something your team would be reviewing?
So, we have, yes, we actually have a staffing process that's inclusive every year, from the principal to the area superintendent, to human resources. And that staffing process looks at projected class sizes as well as what the formula provides, looks for areas that might be an issue, that may need a recommended, a recommended exception from the principal, is considered by that committee, and we certainly make exceptions when the committee approves it, and the committee certainly does approve some exceptions from year to year.
Perfect, and that, that was my question, Mr. Cale. I know this is just ratios we're talking here, but I also wanna make sure all class sizes are reviewed to, you know, we, we do have to take the look in this day and age of budget. If classes aren't making numbers, how many years are gonna we allow them to not make enough student numbers? And is that class the best to be offered at all of our high schools, or should it be offered at one location where students can be bused over there? Because we are opening multiple facilities with multiple classrooms that are connecting all six of our high schools, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mrs. Walton, sorry.
Thank you, President Rice. I, I just want to emphasize the fact that our administration does make adjustments to this formula when it is requested from a principal or a, a group with a specific need. And I just hope that we can continue with that and not crank it down too tight as far as numbers go, especially when we're dealing with the younger children who require a little more supervision to be safe. So I would just, and our special, and our special needs children also. So, I, I appreciate that, and I will count on you to be sure that happens.
Yes, ma'am. And, and our process, I feel real good about it, to the extent that it's got representatives from academics, the campus themselves, HR. So we, we act as a team, I think we've, we've done a pretty good job refining that over the last several years, and we continue to make exceptions that are truly exceptions, so not the norm per se, but where the need is appropriate, we make sure and, and, and take care of that need.
Okay, I don't, I don't see any more lights, and I, I do wanna say in all, all seriousness, although maybe not technically as, as exciting as a brand-new athletics complex, it's extremely important. And I, I think with the comments that are mentioned, have been mentioned, great consideration is, is given to make sure that we've got the right formula in place and the, the right amount of people on each campus and the classrooms taking care of our kids. I, I know that's not an easy task at times. So, with regards like what Ms. Walton said, and, and Mr. Hogg as well, I, I know that you take into, take that into account with your team and do the best that you can, so I, I appreciate that. Without, I don't see any further lights, so we do have a motion to take a vote on to approve the staffing ratios for the eighteen-nineteen budget. Please vote. Whoops. Sorry, try that again. Good. There we go. Motion passes, a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Moving on, the last discussion action item is the Tasby Legislative Recommendations, and I don't know if Ms. Powell has some information. I know, Mr. Hogg, do you wanna, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rice. I'm sorry, I just put him in my mouth. This is something that has come up, and each year, every other year, Tasby sends out before they start grassroots meeting and building their advocacy agenda. They ask for the top priorities from school board members. As we've done this, as we, this board knows, we created an interim legislative agenda first time. So we have a base starting point. What Tasby is asking for here is your top ten priorities. So there's a lot of priorities out there. Multiple districts around the state have different priorities from what the focus is. This is the first year I think Tasby's actually taking more credit and giving more account maybe is the, or more, what's the word? More acknowledgement if an entire board does it together. It's a higher weight, that's a better way to say it. It's more weighted if an entire board does this. And that was sent out, and Ms. Walton brought it up to my attention, said, hey, should we consider this as a board, or do it individually, as a group of seven? And we kinda came to the consensus as a governance committee, the best idea is do this as a board, and have an idea. So with Ms. Powell, and a lot of work from Ms. Powell, and our legislative consultants, and our governance committee, we went through and chose ten priorities that we think are the most critical, that match up with our legislative, our interim legislative agenda, to bring these items up for consideration, for us to be able to submit as a board, which is due December fifteenth. So, sorry if we had to rush this onto this meeting as of last week, and as we got that rushed on, so that we as a board could submit, here's our top ten priorities. And all this will do is send it to Tasby to have it weighted higher from Arlington ISD as a board as our top priorities. It doesn't mean these will necessarily automatically be on the Tasby legislative agenda, it doesn't mean they're gonna be a focus of priority, but by us doing this, I do think it gives us more weight, it allows us as board members, as we all go to District eleven, and they hold these grassroots meetings, which I think are scheduled in February, for Tasby grassroots, for eleven, and then even reaching ten, which I, you know, I usually attend also as well, to help influence what's gonna be on Tasby's priority list. Their priority list does carry a lot of weight within the state to try and help push that through, so we need to make sure our items are on there. So with that, Ms. Powell, I'd say let's cover the top ten priorities and anything else we need to cover, so this board can understand what we're trying to do with this top items. I think the key on this is, these are not the only ten priorities, but we did have to choose the top ten based on our legislative agenda. Thank you.
And so, thank you, and President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, Mr. Hogg keyed that up, queued it up very well. The Tasby organization does, conducts a grassroots process beginning in spring this upcoming year, to develop their legislative agenda for the following session. And so, they've sent the survey out, and as Mr. Hogg indicated, they've listed a number of items, and, and that's what we've chosen from, was the items that were presented to us. Many, many of the items on Tasby's list to choose from are things that are on, already on our own legislative agenda. And so, we were able to select things that we had already identified as being priorities for us. So, Tasby categorized their offerings, if you will, and so, what you see on the titles to these slides are the categories that were, are on the Tasby survey. And so I'll just run through very quickly the ten items that the Governance Committee has, has chosen to bring forward to the full board. Under Finance, we have creation of a new school funding formula. What you see in blue here is a, is verbatim from our legislative agenda. So we simply are acknowledging that here that we want to advocate that the School Finance Commission that was established by the Legislature in Special Session this summer, takes an honest look, a vigorous look, at the current funding system and recommends a, a new system to improve the equity and to also reduce the dependence on local property taxes. And so that was, was an item we chose, along with support for school facilities. This refers to a, a funding mechanism within the, the state funding formulas that has been specifically targeted to help school districts pay their bonded debt. It is a guaranteed yield formula, much like just the, the, the regular foundation school formulas. They have not changed the guaranteed yield on this formula in many, many years. And so, with the guaranteed yield formula, what the formula does is it says, okay, you know, it guarantees that a district, in this case, will generate thirty-five dollars a student in average daily attendance to help pay for bonded debt. Then it looks at your local property values, and it looks to see how much you can raise on your local property values. And so, if you can raise that thirty-five dollars a student with a penny of tax, then you've met the guaranteed yield, you won't get any additional state funding. Over time, as property values across the state have increased, then very few districts are actually receiving any of this funding. So it's, it's another move by the Legislature to transfer the burden of funding public education to local property owners. And so, this particular item calls for an adjustment to that guaranteed yield, so that the state begins to help contribute towards the cost of bonded debt for facilities. They have a category in the survey entitled State Spending Cap Priorities. There are several items in that category. We chose increase in state share of public education funding, similar to what I've just talked about, and what we spent a lot of time talking about during budget season, is that over time, as property values have grown, the state has to contribute less and less into the state funding formulas, and so more of the burden of funding public education shifts to local property owners. And so this particular item is advocating for the state to maintain its share of funding in, in funding public schools. Tax rate flexibility, we were also carrying an item on our agenda that would advocate that the Legislature enact legislation that would allow a, a district to hold a tax authorization election, so that you can plan better, and you can have an election to ask for future taxing authority for your general fund, whereas right now, you have to have a tax ratification election. So you have to actually go forward and set your rate above the current threshold, which is a dollar four, and, and then go to voters and have it ratified at that point. If it doesn't pass, then you have to roll back your tax rate and adjust your budget, and it's, it's a terribly inefficient way to plan for long-term needs on, on budgets. Under the category of alternative schools priorities, they carried, they, Tasby had a line item entitled vouchers to. a line item entitled Vouchers to Include Education Savings Accounts, Tax Credit Scholarships, and Grants for Special Population. In our own agenda, we have an item that says that we oppose any legislation that diverts public funds to private institutions that are not accountable to the public for the use of those funds. And so this aligns very closely to, to our own agenda. So we selected this item. Under the category Accountability and Assessments, they had several items listed again. We chose to bring forward three of those items, first one being a reduction of required state testing. In our agenda, we have an item about removing high-stakes retention provisions for students assessed in grades five and eight. Also, we would advocate for reducing testing redundancy and supporting elimination of state assessments that are not affiliated with federal requirements. Under the A to F ratings, we again had an item very similar, or that addressed the A to F rating system in our own legislative agenda. And that had to do with advocating that the state define what those grades mean, what that performance is, or what performance is represented by each letter grade, as we feel like that that helps stakeholders better understand the ratings given to their schools. And the third item there that we would advocate for are the Accountability Indicators. Within the state accountability system, there are four indices and that now we are asking that we have input on the particular indicators that will be used to assign the letter grade ratings to, for each index. In the Governance Category, there was an item on the survey for, about state takeover of public schools. We have on our own agenda an item that says we advocate for leaving the authority of addressing low-performing schools with a locally elected Board of Trustees rather than permitting the state to more quickly come in and take over a school. We feel that strongly that local control is paramount here and that local boards know best what's, what's best for their communities, their neighborhoods, and can best address the needs of a campus that is struggling. Under the category of Staff Issues, we had identified TRS Care and TRS Active Care as priority items for, for our district. Again, we have an item in our interim legislative agenda regarding TRS Active Care and advocating that the state offer school districts the opportunity to opt out of the TRS Active Care program, or that they offer healthcare plans as consumer-driven plans and that require wellness plans. And so we would select this as one of our top 10 priorities. So with that, I turn it back to you all for any questions.
Dr. Rush, let me just throw in one thing, just so the board's aware that this is, there's a lot of other priorities, and I think everyone received this email asking how it consists. There was an option to choose other items that I would say, and the committee kind of talked about it, focusing on the priorities that were listed are going to be our best bet for the top 10 to really have a lot of influence on the Tasby legislative priorities. And the other thing we will be including when we submit this is not only we'll be checking the boxes, we will give, as you saw, our justification that was listed for each one. That is very clear because we even had some questions when they wrote some of these things in there and they were kind of broad terms, such as the one on, you know, it just says A through F ratings. What do they mean by A through F ratings? So we definitely wanted to provide our clarification of how we felt about A through F ratings and how the example TRS Care and TRS Active Care, what about TRS Care and Active Care? So Ms. Walton, Mr. Choppa, as we met as a governance with Ms. Powell, who was on jury duty and didn't get thrown out of jury duty luckily while she was helping us.
I did get out.
I was, you did? Okay, good. No, Ms. Powell, that's, you'd be a great juror. We are providing the verbiage under each one of those to provide clarification and you saw the verbiage we'll be providing, which hopefully will cause Tasby to directly use some of that verbiage.
I think that's a great point. And that's exactly what I was thinking, Mr. Hogg, that having, when we have our Region 10 and 11 meetings, that, that's exactly what I was thinking, that we would see some of that exact same language used so we can have a great impact and influence. And I guess you're $6 richer, Ms. Powell, from jury duty. Ms. Hudson, please.
Thank you, President Rush. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Ms. Powell and the Governance Committee, having served on that committee. The Governance Committee does a tremendous amount of heavy lifting to bring some stuff to us for our consideration. You guys did send out the Tasby survey for our consideration, so I took a look at it. And it was, it was very nonspecific and it was sort of like, yes, all of that is very important. So when I compared that to the work that you guys did sorting through that and then clarifying exactly how it is that we feel about those things and what it is that's important, I agreed with all of it. And so I really sincerely appreciate the work that y'all have done to bring that to us. And with that, I will move to approve.
And I will second, and Ms. Hudson, I would just ask with that second, Dr. Rush, if we can make sure it's clarification that, I'm not sure exactly, all I have is a PDF, I'm looking at it right now. When we submit it electronically, I'm not sure if it asks for a name. I would ask that we submit this from our Board President and the staff, superintendent staff submitted, submitted on behalf of our Board President for the entire board, just clarification.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds very good. So we have a motion by Mrs. Hudson, a second by Mr. Hogg. Before I call for the vote, I, I would see that these top 10 for us, because we have an extensive legislative agenda, that this would be a, seeing these would, are, we are identifying as our top 10, that on some of these, we can work on our own efforts and with our legislative consultant when it gets closer to that time to find sponsors for specific language that includes our, our reasoning. You know, there's at least 10 different bills there and maybe from the same sponsor, maybe multiples, but I think it's a great, a great starting point for the Governance Committee moving forward. So with that, we have the motion on, on the table to approve then this, our recommendations as a board, these top 10 priorities for Tasby. Please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much and really appreciate the work of Governance Committee coming up with this so that we can consider this as a whole. Moving on, towards Consent Agenda, items to be withdrawn from the Consent Agenda, are there any items that trustees wish to withdraw, consider separately?
I do.
Oh, Ms. Mays.
Yes, I would like to withdraw from the consent items, Consent Item C, Consider Bids.
Okay, all right. Any other items to be considered separately? Okay. So we'll move on then to the items considered, to consider the items on the Consent Agenda. Ms. Powell, could you please share information of bids?
We pulled the bids for the moment, so left on the Consent Agenda are several miscellaneous items along with donations. And the donations we're presenting this evening total $54,232, which brings our year-to-date total to $349,226.
Significant increase over last year.
It is. Last year, through the same point in time, donations totaled $237,000, or $237,651. So it is more than a $100,000 increase over last year at this point.
Yeah, fantastic, fantastic. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda with Item C withheld.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Ms. Hudson to consider, or to approve the consent, less Item C, seeing no discussion lights. Please vote. All votes affirmative, consent passes. Now, Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I pulled Consent Item C that Consider Bids just because they are part of our bond process of our CSPs. And a main question that I wanted to ask was, Cindy, if you don't mind, just briefly explaining on our CSP proposals, we changed our percentage of the evaluation for awarding the bids. The price went from 40% worth of the total points to 35%, and the interview points went from 20% to 15%. So if you could just give just a short reason as to why we changed those percentages.
Right, so these two proposals or competitive seal proposals were put out at different times. So we have a competitive seal proposal for renovation work at Johns and Goodman, and that one was put out on the street first for consideration and for contractors to submit their proposals. In that particular CSP, we have set the criteria at 40% of our scoring was allocated to price, 10% is allocated to hub commitment, 40% to qualifications, and 10% to interview. After we put that out, we had come to the board with other CSPs and what we have identified is a need to focus on qualifications and qualities of the contractors. And so we made a choice to adjust that scoring criteria slightly so that at the next time we issued a CSP, it was for Butler. And so that's the other one we're bringing this evening. And on that one, the selection criteria was tweaked just slightly so that price carries a weight of 35%. Hub and the qualifications remain the same as they are previously at 10% and 40%. And then the interview score went up 5%. So we have, we have a lot of detailed discussion with contractors when they come in and so we learn a lot about contractors and about their staff. We have to bring their project managers, their superintendents, their cost estimators come. We tend to learn an awful lot about them through our questioning there and we felt like that that gave us a little greater opportunity to focus on qualifications and, and experience. And so we just made a slight tweak on those two.
Okay. So if I could just make a comment that I really appreciate the fact that as we continue with our bond and the processes on how we are scoring and granting the bids, that y'all continue to look at the, the best way to make it happen. I personally was surprised but very excited to see a little bit of an increase in the interview portion because as you said, you get a lot of information in that interview from our contractors that just on paper, writing an answer, may not give you, where you may say, based on this interview, it gives them a slight edge. So now you have an opportunity to actually show that in granting the bid. So I just wanted to tell you, I appreciated that. That's it.
Do you?
And I'd like to make a motion to vote on the Consent Item C, Consider Bids 1822 and 1823.
Move to vote or move to?
I move to approve.
To approve, okay. You said move to vote, so I just.
I now move to approve.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you.
Second.
And there's a second, okay. Thank you very much. So move for approval of Consider Bids by Mrs. Mays and a second by Mrs. Hudson for the, the bids 18-22 and 23 CSPs for Johns, Goodman, and Butler. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Powell, for the information. And moving on, the next item is the discussion portion of our agenda. The first one is the Progress Report for Board of Trustees Continuing Education Credit. This is something that we have to do procedurally now as a discussion item, then we bring it back later for formal approval, I believe, and, and this is to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as trustees in receiving the appropriate amount of continuing education as required by the law in Tiers 1, 2, and 3. Without going into the detail, I do have the report if, if anybody is interested specifically in the hours, in individual categories by individual trustees. But at the end of the day, all trustees have completed the required opens, open meetings, trainings, and I would say, Mr. Choppa, thank you for having to go through an extra time crunch, being appointed so late into the year and getting everything accomplished and done in time. So thank you for that so that we have this full, clean report at this point. So that's all we have unless trustees have questions about that, otherwise we can, oh, it does not come back, I'm being told. So that's, that's our official reporting out to the community. So that's it. Okay, well, we'll move on then to the next item, B, the 2018-19 School Calendar Update. Mr., Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rush. And this evening, we'd like to just provide a brief update on our timeline and the process we're engaged in with the calendar development. And so again, this is just where we are in the process and what we can expect next. So, Mr. Hill.
So good evening, Dr. Rush, Dr. Cavassos, and board members. As we are here to just kind of give you an update on the process of where we're on the calendar timeline. A little bit of background, again, we want to keep this on everybody's mind as we go through this process, and that House Bill 2610 changed the requirements from 180, 177 days of instruction to 75,600 minutes. And then the calendar must include at least two makeup days or equivalent minutes to make up those days in the event of school closures. In the, anytime we have early release days, they must be at least 240 minutes in length. Also, there are some other restrictions that school may not begin before, prior to the Fourth Monday in August, but because we are a district of innovation, that's one of the, I guess, exemptions that we've taken advantage of as a part of that. A school district may not schedule the last day of school prior to May 15th, is a part of the law. All school days must be at least seven hours long and that it's still, regardless of the student minutes, teachers must be employed under a 187-day contract. So those are those kind of legal things that we have to consider. Little bit about the timeline, where we've gone so far. So on November 14th, we did a calendar presentation to the DIDC to kind of share the process and the information with them and get some feedback from them. November 28th, a calendar presentation was made to our teacher focus groups, which is a group of teachers throughout the district at various levels that we kind of run things through to just kind of get the teacher feedback on some of those opportunities. All of the principals completed a survey as well on the 29th. The calendar survey was completed by the teacher organizations that are here in Arlington, HSD on November 29th. We had a calendar committee meeting on December 4th where we just kind of went through some of the same things about the law and then looked at some other potential options for what we could do with the calendar. December the 7th, it went out actually today, about 4:30 today, we sent that same survey out to every employee through email directly to their inbox and we want to get some feedback from all of our employees on that. And we're here today giving you an update. I'm sorry, we will send that, that survey will be open until the 14th, so we'll leave it out there for a week for all of our teachers. And we're here today with this update. We'll take all of that information from the staff that's out from the 7th through the 14th, we'll take that back on December 18th to the Calendar Committee, have more discussions about what our feedback tells us, and then we'll come on January 8th, we'll present some options for our community to kind of look at, we'll put them on the website, but prior to that, of course, we will come back to the Board Committee for more discussion on that. And our plan is to come to you on January 18th with a calendar for, for recommendation. The survey question is just a little bit specifics of what we are asking for, and this is what we've already sent out and this is as well what went out today. Question one is just simply, would you prefer, prefer more days off to work without students being present? So this is to give teachers time to work in their classrooms, whether it be PD or just teacher, teacher work time. Would you prefer to end the school year earlier for students? Just straightforward, yes or no. Are the early release days critical to the success at the campus? You know, the, the four days that we have right now, are they critical to your success? And then number four, they're simple, if accomplishing any of these required extending the school day by 12 minutes, would you be in favor of it? And so that's the survey that went out to all, all of our employees today through their inbox. And so we'll get that information back on the 14th and we'll process it and take it to the Calendar Committee on the, on the 18th of December and we'll continue our work and then that'll kind of summarize our next step. So it's kind of where we are and what we look forward to in the coming weeks and we'll take any questions or discussion that you may have.
Thank you, thank you very much. I do have lights indicating. I do have lights indicating, some questions, Mrs. Hudson.
Thank you, President Rice. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Hill. On this survey, the way that it's sent out, is it sort of a checkbox, yes or no? Or is there room for people to write in a little more about their rationalization or how they feel about those questions?
And so the way we've set it up now is, is just it's the checkbox, either yes or no to the question. And that's, we wanted to be consistent with the way that it's gone out thus far and be kind of true to the survey.
Okay. And then my second question is, when you present the calendar option or options, depending on what the committee, the calendar committee comes up with on the website for feedback, how is that feedback gathered?
We're still trying to develop that right now internally and see what, what it looks like. We've looked at some of the surrounding districts and how they, how they've done theirs in the past. And so that's, that's still undetermined at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walton.
Thank you, President Rice. I have a question and a comment. Will the survey participants in this week's process be asked to designate whether they are a teacher or other staff member?
Yes, and so the way the, the first box in the survey is to identify yourself, whether you're elementary or secondary teacher, elementary or secondary administrator, campus support staff, or district support staff. It's the categories.
Yeah. I know we're getting later in the year deciding on all of this calendar. And I'm really wondering if, it shouldn't just be delayed another year before we even consider this. But we'll see where the process goes. Thank you for your, your work on this.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mays.
Dr. Rice, my question was answered, thank you.
Okay. I do have one question, I don't see any other lights. With this survey, is it designed so that only one response per person can, will be realized?
Well, we had some questions about that, some conversations about that internally. And we decided to just let the honor system work and put it out there. And so it is not restricted at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other lights. Well, we look forward to what, what the input is on this so that we have more of a, a more informed decision-making process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we come to the open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards. I think then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rice, and share some information that's going on in our district. First, we've had our, I know, our first athletics stakeholder luncheon that we had this, this November with presidents and representatives from all high schools, from their booster clubs and, and coaches. Great opportunity to share what's going on with athletics and an update. A very positive meeting, and we expect to continue this stakeholder luncheon that we have added to the list of realtors and retired teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Next, nearly all of our schools celebrated and honored veterans in mid-November for Veterans Day. Examples include at Young Junior High, the men's choir singing at Veterans Park. Key Elementary hosted U.S. Representative during an assembly. Morton Elementary students were singing during a program at, at their campus. These are just a few examples of Veteran Day celebrations. And I'm really proud of our campuses and our staff across this district that take a lot of pride in honoring the hard work of our veterans and, and their commitment to our country. And so I just want to thank everyone in the school system for doing that and making it a special day. More than seven hundred people came out to Opportunity AISD. There's one of them, in the, the Dampert Center, November fourteenth, making this event a very big success. Parents were able to see a variety of programs throughout our district that are offered, opportunities, firsthand, hands-on experiences, as you can see some of those pictures, which makes a big difference in planning their future. So I want to thank the Career Center staff, Ginger Polster, and all the staff, Communications Department, Leslie and Aaron and others, for really organizing this Opportunity AISD and making it special for our community. There were a lot of people that took advantage of this. And interestingly enough, a lot of people that, from other districts also. We were able to track some of, of the participants and the attendees and from other districts interested in the programming we're offering and making their choice for AISD. Next, congratulations to Lasagna Blackson from Ellis Elementary, Ashley Booker from Barnett Junior High, Candace Ortega from the then Dappert Career Tech Center, and Evodia Banda from our Food Services Department at South Davis Elementary for being named Teachers and Department Employee of the Month for November. And this is unofficial, and we do it kind of every time as to who gets the most social media reaction. And Evodia Banda, our Food Services Department, received a lot of social media attention for, for her selection for Employee of the Month. And, and so did the others, but there's always one that kind of stands out. So thank you for our employee and teacher of the month. This is a special time when we're able to honor them in a small way. Probably the, the biggest kind of honor, respect that they get is when their students react to their success. And, and without a doubt, every time the students are clapping. And if they're in elementary, they're all jumping up and down and hugging their teacher and et cetera. Larson Elementary held its twentieth anniversary celebration last week. Lamar High School cheerleaders were there to perform during the ceremony, as well as many Larson students. Mrs. Larson was there, the school namesake, and spoke at the ceremony briefly and shared her thoughts and her motivation for students to be successful. And I'll tell you that there were a lot of people there. And when she spoke, everybody was very, very attentive and, and very appreciative of the students and everyone there. So thank you, Ms. Larson, for being there, and all the Larson staff for putting on a great event. Finally, I enjoyed the Martin High School Wind Symphony Holiday Concert Tuesday night. I was honored to play a very small part in this, as I read "Twas the Night Before Christmas" during their performance. I narrated that. And the students are very talented but very forgiving also for, for the narration and keeping up with, with their playing. But it was, it was really nice, Martin High School, well, well done. And so that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any school board members with reports? Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, President Rice. I just want to share from a Finance and Accountability Committee. Tomorrow, the application process for the FFC Committee will begin. It runs between December seventh through January twelfth. This is for two-year terms. We ask you to go on to our website if you have any interest in wanting to serve on this committee. It has been revamped and revitalized in a respect that they meet over the course of the entirety of the year. We hope to have, there's another FFC meeting that will take place on December twelfth. But we're hoping that the application process will close in on January the twelfth. The Finance and Accountability Committee will review the nominations, or the applications, I should say. And then hopefully, the appointment of the members will play, take place on February first, after the board reviews all the candidates. So once again, I would encourage my colleagues here, if you know qualified applicants to serve on the FFC, please reach out with them to our general public. If you really want to understand the inner workings of our district and how we have to grapple with many of the different issues during the course of the year as it has to do with our finance, our finances and other decisions, this would be a great opportunity to serve. So that will open up tomorrow.
Yes, Mr. Hibbs, we had to split the, the body into participants into one-year terms and two-year terms from the beginning to kind of stagger everything. Our folks that are finishing a one-year term, are they, they're eligible also to, to refile and run again? Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, Ms. Walton, we don't have any.
There's some good, good folks there. It was just luck of the draw whether they got a one-year or a two-year term.
Absolutely, and I'm glad that you pointed it out because we do not have a stiplice in there. Matter of fact, we had, we used up our entirety of our alternate pool.
Alternates, yeah.
And we were very, very thankful that we had alternates that stepped in and said that they would step in knowing that they would have to reapply only after two months. So we're very, very appreciative to those individuals that came for almost the course of a year without ever having a voice. So I appreciate you pointing that out. Those, we do want the individuals to reapply if they, if they're willing to step up for that, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Yes, it's, it's, it's great to have vested, interested community members to help us out, absolutely. Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, President Rice. I just wanted to share with my fellow colleagues, board members, and the folks at home. Dr. Cavassos, Ms. Mays, Ms. Walton, and I, this autumn had gotten the privilege to attend the Council of Great City Schools. This year, it was in Cleveland, Ohio. And it's a really wonderful conference where districts that look like ours all come together and share best practices, ways that they've overcome challenges. And so it was really, really great to attend. I got to sit in a lot of different little sessions to hear different points of view. There were two that really stuck with me that I would like to share. And the first one is that there was a mentoring program that was started by Senator Frederica Wilson, who's very notable for the hats that she wears. She's a senator from down in Florida. And she had begun a program called Five Thousand Role Models. And it's very specifically for young men of color. And it's a very structured program. It's been extremely successful. To quote their success, over ninety-five percent of the students who begin the program graduate and have no further violations of student code, student conduct codes or law. So really, having a strong mentor in their lives is clearly provided with the structure of the program, been very impactful in these young people's lives, and helped promote them to be more ambitious and to be able to achieve their ambitions. As we work towards our goal of graduating one hundred percent of our students fully prepared, I think it's a little bit like a football game. And the closer that you get to, you know, you're in the, what is it called, the red zone, right? Thank you.
That's right.
The closer that you get to that goal line, the harder it gets, the harder you have to push to gain those inches. And so I know that we have a few role model mentoring programs going on here in Arlington. But this one is one that they have been able to replicate it and go to different counties in Florida and expand. I don't know that this is necessarily the right one for Arlington. But I think that exploring a mentoring program and seeing if that's something that works for any special student populations, young women who want to go into STEM, you know, any special population that might need someone to help guide them along the way, I think would be helpful. The other one that I would like to share is one that's very specifically close to my heart. And that is that I got to listen to a presentation about student wellness. Cleveland presented, and then also Dallas AISD, which is our close neighbor. If you know the rules around student wellness, there are rules from the USDA, laws that we have to follow. And then there are additional state laws that we have to follow as well. So there's a lot of compliance issues. Dallas has created a very successful, very broad base in their School Health Advisory Committee. They have about seventy-five members. They've been able to engage members of the private community, hospitals, things like that, to be able to join in and really collaborate with them on solutions and ways that they can serve student wellness better. So I have shared with my colleagues who are on the Community Engagement Committee, the PowerPoint presentations from there. There was also a nonprofit that helps find grants and helps provide a little guidance to your Shack in your district. So something that I hope that we might be able to look at is if they can be helpful to us. Our Shack is sort of putting down its roots right now. And so anything that we can do to feed those roots and help them just grow deeper, I think is really exciting. I will be going next week with the chair of our Shack Committee to attend the Dallas Shack Committee and sort of see how they do business, see how they divide up their committees to do different work, and just really try to learn and bring that back to our district and continue to help our Shack grow. So thank you for listening. That was a really fantastic conference, and it really helped expand my mind as far as how we can serve our students better here in Arlington.
Very good, thank you for the information. I really appreciate it. Next, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Rice. As Ms. Hudson said, we, several of us attended this conference in Cleveland. And I, I think the, probably the, the best thing about it to me was there were a whole lot of people there in similar boats that we're in. And some of them are further ahead of our progress on some of the issues. And in many cases, our district is ahead of many of, you know, of those that are also struggling with more literacy and social, you know, socioeconomic issues that that brings to children. And I, I think our district made four presentations, is that correct? So out of a dozen or so for each slot, that was, I don't know, maybe Cleveland and some of the Ohio groups made more, more presentations. But they didn't have to drive as far as, or move as far as we did. So I think Arlington represented very well at this national group of Council of Great City Schools. I attended two, well, more than two, but I attended two that were very impactful for me. The first one had to do with schools and public libraries collaborating. Imagine that I would be interested in, in that one. And in light of the fact that our public library system here in Arlington is really becoming dynamic and moving forward in lots of areas, including building a brand-new downtown library, I was very excited to bring this back to and share with Yoko Matsumoto, our Library Services Director for the city. The takeaways from it were that, the one thing that was said about, in this thing was that studies shows that parents from higher socioeconomic levels say that their, their first child, excuse me, that they are their child's first teacher. But if you ask parents of low socioeconomic students who the child's first teacher is, they will say it's their kindergarten teacher. So right away, there is a big, a, a big hill to climb over there, helping young, parents of young children understand that they have a role in educating those children from the time they get here. And that was one of the takeaways from, from this session. There was, it was Nashville Public Library, Cleveland Public Library, and Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Library. They're a big district in, the Carolinas, forgot which one. So I, I have shared, as I said, shared this with Yoko and to see if there's any place there that they might see some things. It was quite a long program. There were many other very interesting things. Something that we're doing is sharing our student ID numbers, I believe, with the public libraries so that the kid, you know, our students can use that same, basically lunch number to, you know, access books from the library, public library. So we're ahead of the game, kind of, a lot of these districts are just now implementing that sort of thing. The Charlotte Mecklenburg Program was responding to a two thousand and fourteen Pew Research Center finding that eighty-five percent of Americans believe that libraries should coordinate more closely with local schools. So I thought, boy, that's, that's an interesting statistic. The other one I attended that, again, is very close to my heart is, it was entitled Positive School Climate. And it was put on by Cleveland Public School person, a Seattle Public School person, and Toledo Public Schools. And Cleveland is doing some really innovative things. It was a great. It was a great city to visit, too. Students were surveyed on School Climate and they wanted two things. They wanted teachers who challenged them and they wanted to feel safe. And those those were two. And one of the biggest takeaways from this one, there's all kinds of ways that it's improved attendance and kids graduating and everything else. But and I know I bore all of you that were there with this, but the main takeaway was we should all be dream builders, not dream killers. And the example was when third grader Johnny says he wants to play in the NBA and that he's a pretty short third grader, that we see this as an opportunity to ask him, what can we do in this class to help you reach your goal? And give that kid a purpose for the task at hand. Don't kill his dream with Johnny, you're too short, you'll never play in the NBA. So I know we have a lot of teachers in this town that are dream builders all the time. We saw the results here tonight with our wonderful merit scholars and Hispanic scholars. So we've just got to keep keep rowing that direction. And I also must add, I attended the Key Elementary Veterans Event. It was stellar. The mayor was there and city councilman, oh, not Lana Wolf, but the other one. Anyway, and she kept saying, this is the best one I've ever attended. And she's probably, she said, I'd sit here and listen to these kids all day. She said, some of the adult ones get kind of boring. So I better not make her name anyway. But after saying that, but she was she was very impressed and kept repeating how impressive they had all, you know, all these kids had been, and they, and the group watching the presentation was mesmerized. They were, no discipline problems, everybody was focused. It was it was really amazing. Great job, Key Elementary.
Great. Great. Thank you, Ms. Walton, very much. Mr. Hogg?
Ms. Walton, I'm sure the council members love having that relayed. Just a couple of things to follow up on the board. This last week, I had the opportunity as the director, serving this board for Tech Association of School Boards, to have another very open, transparent conversation with Commissioner Mike Marath. And I will say, good or bad, whatever the commissioner's doing it, it's one of the most transparent commissioners who very clearly is stating what his goals are, what his strategy is. I know I sent out to all this board his strategy presentation. There's some really good things in there, some things have concern, which could cost us money. Imagine when he presents to our TASB board, we ask pepper lots of questions from that. Example is, they are very close to changing teacher and principal certification. This could potentially cause more money for us. It could also be potentially be good things. So it's one of those things we must keep a close eye on. I must say, the commissioner did call out Arlington ISD in a very positive light as he was going through his presentation in front of the old TASB board. He looked at me and said, we need to do more things like you guys have done in your early college high school, and pointed right at me and said, Arlington even got a community college to pay for it and this school's outperforming almost everyone in the state. It was very, it was very apparent, and he is very eye-opening of what is happening on that, and also as he talked about different types of pre-K. He mentioned Arlington of community-based pre-K that we're doing to add some expectations. So those are good things. He's working on those. One thing I did want to say to the board, something we don't normally travel to, and if anyone's interested, I would say this is the year if you want to try it out. We don't normally go to National School Board Association. I don't even think we've ever tested it. This year it is held in San Antonio. It's the first time since like 1980-something it's been held in Texas. So this year, if you want to start looking at it, you can look it up on nsba.org, but it's April 7th through 9th, which is a Saturday through Monday in San Antonio. So if anyone wants to attend that, it is a good time. I know some of our surrounding districts do send some colleagues to that every year and it's one of the ones they choose. So if anyone's drive down, there's no cop flights, so that's always makes it a little more affordable for everyone. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Excuse me, Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Just very quickly, short synopsis of takeaways from Great City Council Schools. One huge takeaway is something we already know, but pre-K, the more words these young kids can learn how to speak and how to hear, the better the foundation is once they start school. So once again, very important for that community-based support for our precares and to get them involved in in just words, speaking. Something else is discipline. It's not a, just a local Arlington issue, it is a nationwide issue. So it was very interesting to hear so many different ways that different districts are trying to deal with discipline, how to break it down to see where the discipline areas are happening. So very good information and networking about discipline in other districts as well. Huge, huge takeaway also is the partnerships. How many districts are building partnerships within the community, faith-based, nonprofit groups, the what is not a cliche, and I've always said is it takes a village, is very, very true. And especially these days, as money from the local level as well as the federal level is becoming smaller and smaller, these partnerships are just going to become even more important and critical for the success of our students. And then also with that being said, LA County District was there and just want to make sure that we send our prayers out to have to close down an entire district due to the fires that are going on down there. We know logistically the problems that that can cause, in addition to the hardship of their employees and their students that are being impacted. So just want to say that prayers are going out to that area.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mays. And I don't see any other lights. Ms. Ms. Walton, Ms. Hudson, Ms. Mays, thank you for the the synopsis and filling us in and allowing us to hear some of the great experiences that you had at in Ohio at Great City Schools.
Yeah, I'll, I will email the or electronically send you the notes, you know, because they were lengthy sessions on my two that I wrote up, so I'll send those all out to y'all.
Well, thank you. I think it's it's wonderful to hear these pearls and it just, it helps us all congeal with different ideas and thoughts and what we're trying to do, which is make everything better for our children. So thank you very much and I appreciate all the information from everybody's reports this evening. Longer than usual, but very fruitful, I believe. With that said, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, President Reich. The Governance Committee, just want to reiterate that the Governance Committee will review future possible policy discussions on delegating project closeout decisions to the superintendent.
Okay. Okay. That works. That's fine.
Thank you, I guess.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Madam Secretary, very much. Don't want you to quit on me. I am, I will just say it's 10:21. We're not moving to close the meeting. This meeting's adjourned. I'm sorry.